Franklin County, Boulder County Commission now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson. That and then Ms. Jackson.
Yeah, Ms. Marsha Johnson was unable to be here today. But we do have eight resolutions for adoption for unanticipated revenue as part of the end of the year fiscal bookkeeping. That involves funds that were not included in your initial budget last year because at the time of the budget adoption, the funds were unanticipated. Approval is needed to comply with Florida statutes 129 to incorporate these funds into your budget. The first resolution deals with $509,848 received from the Florida Department of Transportation for payment of expenses related to the marking of the airport runways. The funds were placed into account 170.74.540.4603, the airport fund rehab airfield pavement. The second resolution deals with $23,823 received from the Florida Department of State as reimbursement for the costs associated with the special elections of 2019. Those ones were placed into the supervisor of elections budget in her District Seven Special Elections line item. The third resolution deals with unanticipated loan proceeds in the amount of $173,595 from Ring Investment.
Hey, I'm good.
And $40,000 in sales proceeds from the trade-in of a 2002 Caterpillar motor grader for the road department.
Oh, excuse me.
These funds were placed into account 140.41.541.6401 machinery and equipment 2019 motor grader. The fourth resolution deals with $193,290 received from unanticipated tipping fee revenues from the processing of Hurricane Michael debris. The funds were placed into account 304.40.534.6401 tipping fees machinery and equipment for the purchase of a new Caterpillar excavator for the landfill. The fifth resolution deals with $279,554 received from unanticipated property insurance damage reimbursements from the Florida Lega Cities for expenses relative to building and park repairs after Hurricane Michael. The funds were placed into account 001.20.572.4605 hurricane Michael recovery repairs. The sixth resolution deals with $308,000 received from leasing to as part of the revolving lease purchase program for replacement dump trucks as unanticipated loan proceeds and $25,000 in sales proceeds from the trade-in of a 2003 Mack dump truck from Capital Truck. $308,000 was placed into account 140.41.541.6401, the road department machinery and equipment. $23,250 into account 140.41.541.7100, road department principal, and $1,750 into account 140.41.541.7200, road department interests. The seventh resolution deals with $387,627 received from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the payment of expenses relative to providing permanent housing for the East Point fire victims. $40,000 was placed into account 150.52.539.3100, the CDBG program professional services, and $347,627 into account 150.52.539.8200, the CDBG program aid to citizens. The eighth resolution deals with $277,992 received from the Florida Division of Emergency Management as state and federal FEMA reimbursements for the payment of expenses relative to debris removal, emergency protective measures, and miscellaneous repairs after Hurricane Michael. $144,809 was placed into account 001.20.572.4605 hurricane Michael recovery repairs. $120,232 into account 001.20.511.1300 county commission other wages. $8,346 into account 001.20.511.2100 county commission FICA taxes, and $4,605 into account 001.20.511.2200 county commission retirement. The formal resolutions have been included as part of the agenda packet, and the Finance Department is requesting a motion from the Board to approve the resolutions on unanticipated revenues for your 1819 budget.
Pleasure to vote. Go ahead.
I got one question real quick on resolution number two. What says $23,823 went into the supervisor elections budget? Now, when they had that special election, did the county not have to front the money for that?
The county did. We actually fronted $25,000 to her, and so she did actually give those grant proceeds over.
So that come out of her budget?
It came out of her budget.
Okay, so this going back in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
So we're increasing her funds.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Farrar.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones.
Okay.
All them people?
Aye.
All the poll, that's passed unanimously. Go ahead.
Okay, I do have, also have some budget amendments to amend last year's budget. The budget amendments actually move budgeted values from one line item to another. See, the budget amendments below are needed to move the line items within departmental budgets to cover the excess costs incurred by departments during Hurricane Michael response. Decrease 001.40.534.1200 solid waste regular salaries, $16,421. Decrease 001.40.534.2200 solid waste retirement, $9,0505. Decrease 001.40.534.2400 solid waste workers compensation, $7,292. Decrease 001.40.534.3100 solid waste professional services, $20,000. Decrease 001.40.534.7100 solid waste principal, $23,016. Decrease 001.53.562.4600 animal control repair and maintenance, $10,000. Decrease 001.70.572.4600 parks and recreation repair and maintenance, $10,000. Increase 001.40.534.4400 solid waste rentals and leases, $21,000. Increase 001.40.534.4600 solid waste repair and maintenance, $61,400. Increase 001.40.534.5200 solid waste operating supplies, $14,230. Decrease 304.40.534.5200 tipping fees operating supplies, $144,917. Increase 304.40.534.3100 tipping fees professional services, $117,193. Increase 304.40.534.4600 tipping fees repair and maintenance, $27,724. We need an action, a motion to approve the line item budget.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, I meant Commissioner Mastin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All them favor?
Aye.
All the poll, that's passed unanimously.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody got anything else from Mr. Farrar? Y'all keep up the good work. Lot of numbers there. All right. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Allen Pfeiffer. Restore accordingly.
More questions. Several items on our report, but most are straightforward. First item is a fairly lengthy, I'll read it to you, update on East Point and Two Mile dredging project. On October 18th, Josh Adams, the ARPC staff, and I completed a conference call with Mr. Nate Lovelace of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers from the Mobile Office regarding the county's two dredging projects. Mr. Dan Duarte, Gulf Consortium staff, was on the call as well. For East Point, around the beginning of December, the Corps will have received three preliminary designs for building the spoil area and dredging the channel to its original depth, design depth of eight feet. The Corps will share the designs with the county with a recommendation on when they propose. Once the county and the Corps agree on the design disposal area, then the Corps will go to FDEP and finalize the permit. The Corps thinks they can get a permit out of FDEP by March of 2020, and if they can, they will use an existing contract to mobilize a dredge contractor to start dredging by May or June of 2020. By using an existing contract, the Corps will save months of time it would otherwise have to use in going out to bid for this specific job. The Corps hopes, and they do expect, their funds will cover the cost of dredging the East Point Channel. But if it does not, the county will provide the additional funds by using some of our consortium funds. The Corps will provide us a proposed budget in December. On the Two Mile Channel, the Corps has done the initial assessment of the Two Mile Channel and the disposal area. The Two Mile disposal area is not in that bad of a shape, and the Corps says it will not take a lot of work to rehab it because they will be using a smaller dredge that will not pump as much water into the disposal area. At this time, they intend to use the same dredge at Two Mile as they use at East Point. So in a perfect schedule, the Corps will finish the East Point and then move the dredge to Two Mile. The Corps will provide the county with the cost assessment of the Two Mile in December as well as the East Point number. But the general numbers we discuss are within the funds the county allocated in the consortium funds. Mr. Duarte says that normally there is a four to six month process to get final approval for consortium projects through the Gulf Council. And please remember, the Gulf Council is a federal interagency that has final approval on all consortium expenditures. But Mr. Duarte says that because this is a Corps project, there is a mechanism for the county to get preapproval from the Gulf Council. Mr. Josh Adams will begin that preapproval application process with Mr. Duarte once the Corps gives the county the proposed budgets. So if the projects move forward without any problems, then the East Point Channel and the Two Mile Channel should both be dredged in the summer fall of 2020. So that's really good news because I was afraid that they would have to go out for bid and we would be pushed back. So hopefully, we will know more here in a month and move from there. I will say, I don't remember the numbers now, Commissioners, but both the Two Mile Channel, East Point Channel are in the consortium with allocations, so we have money to cover both those. Admittedly, they were our second and third projects. Our first project was the EOC. We had a million dollars set aside for EOC construction, but because Two Mile and East Point are coming along sooner, we will use those, we'll do those projects first and your consortium then, the funds for the, if we don't get any legislative money for the EOC, then you will have to, I think in 2020 or 2021, or 2021, you'll have construction money for your new EOC. And it's going to take 2021 to get the design done anyway. So it'll all work out.
So it's all falling in place now?
We hope so. We really do. It's taken a long time to fall into place.
What do, navigationally, what do we gain from that? Is that a better exit and entry from Apalachicola Bay out into the Gulf? Is that what that means?
Well, the Two Mile Channel is a safety access. I mean, the direct channel is a core maintained channel. The intercoastal waterway goes, you know, out to the bay and then turns left and goes towards Carabel, and then there's a spur that goes to the Bob's Size Cut. That spur is also part of our, sort of a local channel. The Two Mile Channel comes out of the mouth of the Apalachicola River and goes along the shore past, you know, Apalachicola and then past where the hut used to be and goes on west. That's an access that everybody uses in bad weather because it gives you protection from the open Apalachicola Bay and gives you, and it's a shorter route also because it's a big sand flat out there that you avoid if you use the Two Mile Channel. So it's a great access point, and we have a boat ramp now that's sort of at the end of the Two Mile Channel that is not as functional now because you can't use the Two Mile Channel. So we'll clean that out and get that boat ramp back into its full configuration. And then at East Point, the East Point Channel hasn't been dredged in 20 years, and so the redredging of the East Point Channel, you know, I will tell you, and Commissioner Jones, we haven't had the discussion publicly about it, but East Point has lost its working waterfront and has lost its working waterfront for 20 years. And so what comes back in is somewhat open for discussion because the seaford houses that were there, there were a lot of oyster houses there. I'm not sure that they'll be rebuilt. They've been damaged by hurricanes, by the loss of oysters. So the restructuring of the East Point waterfront is something that we'll have to see what happens. You know, we just don't know yet. But it's critical for East Point to become a community to have that waterfront reopened. It's really affected its future.
Can I add something, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
And also, Commissioner Bolt, the East Point, it's actually not a channel, it's actually a mooring.
Yes.
Because there's one in, one out. So it also not only would give revitalization to the waterfront area, but it also provides safe harbor for vessels during storms and stuff like that.
Yeah.
That they wouldn't have anywhere else.
And another thing, they don't use it for, you don't know, the oysting gets like, but they still use it like commercial fishing.
Oh, yeah.
People go fishing on both ends.
It's harder fishing, yeah.
And this is really off the topic, but Commissioner Bolt, one of the critical factors for getting your seaford industry functioning is ice. You've got to have ice. And I think David Barber still has an ice plant there, but he'd be the only one. We have an ice plant here in Apalachicola, but ice is critical. Carabel, see, Carabel doesn't have an ice plant anymore, so you can dredge all the channel you want in Carabel, but if there's no ice, no big shrimp boats, no big fishing boats. It's a factor that most people don't realize. They think it's all about mooring. It's not all about mooring. It's about fuel and ice. That's what you need.
I see.
Okay. Item number two. Update on the Triumph application of a fuel farm and a backup generator at the airport. There was a meeting yesterday at the airport with Centric Aviation. Both Tara and Andrew, who have left the room, were there, Andrew was there, and Triumph staff and Corey Henderson, I. The Triumph staff is looking to enhance the county's application and move it forward with the Triumph Board. And the next board meeting here is in Apalachicola on Wednesday, November 20th. I would tell you, we're going to meet again, that they are, we're trying to add educational components to our applications to show that while we can't create jobs by just replacing our fuel farm, that there is some training that can be done out there that'll help kids get jobs in other airports. Andrew is already a certified, in fact, he is a certified fuel quality control inspector through the National Air Transportation Association, and Tara just got appointed to the National Air Transportation Association Aviation Business Committee. That's a national committee, so these two individuals are the owners of Centric, are motivated individuals involved in the aviation community, and Triumph is going to build on their activities and our airports, so we will have some additional, nothing on the county side necessary, but Centric is going to assist in getting more educational components out there, and maybe, maybe the friends of Apalachicola may also have some value in that. I'll rely upon Centric to work that out. But I think we are finding a way to move forward with our million dollar application to get that finally approved. And I'm hoping, although they didn't say this, I'm hoping on November 20th that they will be able to vote on something. And so that's where I'm going. All right, item number three. Update on, we already know some of this, but I'll go ahead and read it to the record. Post tropical storm Nester, as the board is aware, the storm did not create enough damage statewide for FEMA declaration, so all the damage to Alligator Drive, which involved losing, I thought all the asphalt out of the 1,100 feet, but Howard did only 658 feet or so. Was damaged by Hurricane Michael, that was all lost at county expense, not going to do any reimbursement at this time unless Commissioner Bolt can pull a rabbit out of the hat with the state. Commissioner Bolt may have some more information, but we already talked about that, so we're looking forward to a meeting that he can have with the DOT. The status of the $4.7 million repairs as bid out by Anderson Columbia is still under review by FEMA Regional Office in Atlanta. Senator Rubio's office has reached out to the county to see if we have any FEMA issues, and so I've discussed this stall with Josh Gable of the Senator's Office. And again, as we said earlier, anybody can call anybody anytime, day or night, do so to try and get them to realize that something's got to be done. And the issue, which I didn't write down here, the issue is this, I feel like, and I haven't got confirmation from FEMA on this, but from everybody else, is essentially FEMA doesn't want to increase the share of repairs to Alligator Point on the federal level. So Hurricane Hermine had a 75, Hurricane Hermine had a certain match, and I forget now, I'm going to mix up my numbers, I apologize. Hurricane Michael had a different match. If we shift the, all the cost to Hurricane Michael, that theoretically increased the federal, and the feds don't want to do that. That's why they keep wanting to split it too because the local match was different between the two storms. Because we got the DEO money, it doesn't matter what the match is. We have DEO money to cover the local share. And so I've told everybody, and I'll tell the community, it doesn't matter what the local match, it can be six and a half percent, it can be 12 percent, or 12, it doesn't matter because the DEO money will cover the four point, it'll cover the maximum amount of match that we're required to pay at the $4.7 million project cost. So FEMA can move forward, just find the mechanism to tell us what our local match is, and the DEO money's going to cover it. I can't seem to get that message up the chain far enough to make a difference. So I tell everybody that, that the local match shouldn't be an issue. We have the funds to cover it no matter what it is.
Allen, let me ask you a question. That's the money to put the road back, right?
Yes, sir.
With the road being that close to the water, is it going to help?
Well, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, you and I have talked about the bridge mechanism, and the thing about, well, let me answer. The road needs further protection, in my opinion, and that further protection would be a beach out there. And all that we're doing now does not involve a beach. That beach is a separate project. We are, we have put a request in through Mike Nebraska for some design money to finish the design or beach re-nourishment for a small area. We see, we hope the legislature will fund that. But you're right, Commissioner, if we don't get further protection out there so that the road that we're building back isn't constantly, you know, being beaten on by the storm, you're right. What's going to happen is, and it's going to happen whether it's a seawall and a road or whether it's a bridge, the problem is the same. The ends where we have stopped protection are where it's going to wash out again. And I guarantee you that we could build a bridge for where we're at now, but if we don't do something where the bridge starts, that ramp there, there's another 1,000 feet of Alligator Drive that is only separated from Gulf Mexico by private property and private retaining wall. Some of those are wood. Some of those have already failed. And so that's why building a bridge, Commissioner, has the same problem, the same risk as a road and a seawall because it's that beginning point where we haven't had damage yet is where we're going to fail again. And that's why we have to have a beach across the whole area about a mile long to protect that beginning point. Because Commissioner Bridge, and Clay, and we've talked about numbers generally, I mean, a bridge is several million dollars. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's six or seven million dollars or 4.7, but it doesn't matter. Both have the same failure point. That failure point is where the road is currently protected by private property, but will wash out when you have another big storm, and there's just no way around it.
Well, how much does sand a coat put a mile of thing?
Uh, I, about eight to 10 million dollars.
Lord.
Yeah.
That ain't going to happen.
Well, this is how it's going to happen, Commissioner. We are going to have to stay at affordable half the money. I would propose you use your restored money for the other half, but the burden is, the burden is who's going to pay to maintain that sand because the sand is washing away. It's a critically corroding shoreline, and there's no point in putting $10 million for the sand out there unless there's a mechanism to put, to keep it in place. If you have a hurricane, then FEMA comes in and helps. But if you don't have a hurricane, the sand is washing away anyway, and it's washing away at the rate, and again, my numbers are fading in my mind, I have $250,000 a year of sand. So every, every eight years, you need $4 million of sand, as I recall. Half of that would come from the state, but the other half has to come from some funding source. And normally, and I say normally because I realize there's a lot of resistance to what I'm going to say, normally that other funding source are the property owners who benefit from the sand being there, from the beach being there. That's the normal path. We have discussed with the Alligator Point community several times. It has been turned down at least twice. Well, one time wasn't where we voted yet, one time turned down, one time sort of neutral. But that is a normal pattern. Now, are there some other options out there to help defray that cost? There are. Perhaps parking, perhaps a road toll, there are some other things, but classically, it's an MSBU assessment on the property owners who benefit from that protection. And that's, I can't say it anyway, that's the classic standard way of doing it. And we haven't resolved that, who's going to pay for that.
We got to do what we got to do.
I think so, Commissioner. I think, I think everybody's losing. The county's losing, I think the property owners in Alligator Point are losing because I think the property values, while Hurricane Michael didn't, didn't cause them to go down, I think overall, the property values in Alligator Point are not rising like they are in other places because they are at risk.
If we don't, it's like this, if, if we put the road and then come back, put the sand, if we don't have a mechanism in place to keep it going, that's right, 10 years from now, you're going to be back in the sand.
Absolute, yeah, absolutely.
Back to ground zero.
If, if I'm not going to recommend you put the sand out there the first time, if you don't have that mechanism in place before you put the sand out there.
It's going to wash away.
It's going to wash away.
It's going to wash away.
I've got one comment. When we, and I know we're not considering building a bridge, but if you build a bridge, it's just going to wash out, it's going to cut through Alligator Point and wash the sand up and under the bridge. I mean, there's nothing there to protect.
Right.
Further erosion. It's trying to cut Alligator Point to begin with. So if you don't do something to protect that area that we're talking about, it's just going, you know, it's just going to continue eroding. Even if you had a bridge, what I'm saying, it's just going to continue washing it out until it's all gone.
And the problem with the bridge, the practical problem with the bridge is that you have, every 100 feet, you have a house in a driveway, and so how do you, there's just no way to build ramps every 100, I mean, just, you know, practically, it just doesn't work.
Well, it wouldn't be a house here long because it's just going to wash the sand.
The south's not going to be a house at all. It's going to be gone.
And north side either. If you just build a bridge and the waves come up under the bridge, it's just going to continue erode until it cuts it completely in two.
Mr. Chairman.
We ever get a dead hit, it's over anyway.
We just heard a real historical overview of the entire big picture. It's, it's not just rebuilding the road. This is a big picture of rebuilding the road and protecting it. And I see it as just a very responsible way of protecting FEMA's investment by building the beach out front. And I think we need to be, you know, working on strategy on how we're going to get that beach built out front and keep FEMA informed that we care enough about their money that we're doing that, and we care enough about their money in the future to remaintain that beach as we go forward.
And I wish FEMA had a better program for hazard mitigation.
Me too.
But they have, they have a very strong division between what was there before the storm, what was there after the storm, and if we didn't have an engineered beach, they are not helping put it there the first one. I mean, they, I can't get across that barrier, so we have to get the beach there some other way besides FEMA. But yes, once it's there, then they can help us.
They're not willing to use as a mitigation.
Nope, nope. They will not spend money to build a beach first.
Now, will Senator Rubio help us in this overall picture? Should we start?
Well, you can lobby everybody you want, but again, normally, the placement of a beach the first time is not a federal.
No, it isn't, but it complements the federal effort.
I agree.
That's where we want to go.
One, 20 years ago, we looked at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers because at that time, they were trying to figure out, remember all the spoil areas on the Apalachicola River? There was a theory that we would barge the spoil that they were trying to get out of the river to Alligator Point.
I remember that.
And that's sort of failed through, and then anyway. So there are other federal partners, but it won't necessarily be FEMA.
Well, the people, the people put us in this position to be good steward of the county. And once we get that thing back in situating, we shouldn't be putting it back in a situation where we're just going to look at it for a couple of years or 10 years. You've just got to keep it going, and then you won't have these problems later on. But right now, if we just build a road, we do.
It'll wash away.
You're right.
It'll wash away, so we got, we got to do what's right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in fact, and again, I don't want to stand at the podium, but say that, but, but so your, the $36,000 you spent this time came out of your general road department budget. And, you know, they can afford that kind of thing, but if you had, you know, if you have a winter storm again, which might, I mean, you might, we might, before this fiscal year is out, we might easily be down there two or three times spending $30,000 each time. So eventually, you could have quite a bit of money down there. That's why that beach is critical to keep the overall road department budget intact. Otherwise, it's.
Allen Pfeifer, resident of Alligator Point. The community will come together for a funding mechanism to support the beach re-nourishment in some way, shape, or form. It's inevitable that we have to come together because no one can fight this forever and ever. I do want to make it clear that not just the people that are in front of the beach to be re-nourished are benefit, are going to be benefited by this. In the last year, we actually had to run a fire truck on the beach with boards because it couldn't get around, couldn't get around the roof of the road. We've had, FWC had to come with four-wheel drive vehicles just in the last 30 days to evacuate somebody that was financially in dis, not financially, excuse me, physically in distress. Property values along all of Alligator Point, Ball Point, all have been affected by this. There will be a consensus of the people at Alligator Point. Please be a partner with us as we do this. We will not fight you, we will work with you. And I just want to thank everybody for continuing to fight the good fight here. I have an ability to reach out to Senator Rubio. I will go ahead and do that. I encourage everybody else who has political contacts to do the same thing. Obviously, this is an issue at FEMA in Atlanta, though we have, maybe we have an ability to reach out to FEMA in Atlanta itself, there's got to be a director there. I just would, but my point is that this is a, not a problem just to the people that in front of wherever beach would be nourished, but of all people out there, it's a life safety issue, it's an economic issue. Thank you very much for listening to me.
And Alan has a point, and I sort of support him. It ends up being, unless you get 100% you know, buy-in, there's always an issue of someone suing over the fairness of an assessment. So we have to be aware, there's a, has to be what they call a rational nexus, is a[1749.26] the legal term, uh, between the assessment and the, and the value, uh, that someone gains from that. And so, yes, in a perfect world, there's some, and I'm making the number up, a thousand property owners out there.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, that could be assessed, uh, that'd be the biggest number, the smallest number might be only those people who are west of the washout, and that now, number's now, you know, maybe four hundred. So it's a big swing, and therefore, a big swing in how much everybody's gonna pay. And, uh, so that's something we've got to work on. I had, just what you know, I wanna get, we're way off the topic here, I asked Mike Nubrowski a couple of months ago, and I'll, I'll remind him now that I'm back in town, that he's, he was going to put together a proposal for helping determine what assessment should be, because he has the numbers on how much it's gonna cost to put the sand, and he wanted to go back to GSG, who was our legal advisor on that thing, and get, uh, the legal advice. Uh, he was gonna give me a proposal, which y'all would have, would see and approve, for putting together the MSBU, you know, a, a, a component of it.
Well, see, what I'm saying is this, uh, I'm willing to do that part, but what I'm not willing to do, and I'm not gonna vote, that to do, is put the whole county to pay for that. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be smart, and, and, but I think it should be contained to that area.
And traditionally, that's how it's done everywhere in the state of Florida, there are the benefits, I think legally required to there, the benefits, you know, pays for the, for the benefit.
Have we looked at tax increment financing?
Uh, I haven't looked at anything, I mean, I, I, that's another odd way, it would be out of the...
Would you explain that to the commissioners, perhaps? I'll sit down.
Uh, well, actually, I really, you got me off guard, I can't remember quite how tax increment financing works.
Uh, tax increment financing, uh, anticipates, you have a base, a base year, and you get your taxes, but if, if the value of the properties go up, we can use some of that money to help pay for the improvements that were created as a result of, uh, you know...
So it's more like a CRA then?
Yeah.
Yeah, without a lot of details, it, it, it takes into account the value that the properties will go up substantially as a result of having beach re-nourishment, some more than others. But it accomplishes, it's another idea that hasn't been fully vetted at this time, uh, along with, uh, toll roads and MSBUs and, uh, maybe a little help from the TDC. But, uh, anyway, uh, enough, I'll sit down. But that's a, something we should look at.
We'll look at the TDC and the toll roads, other part we're gonna look at.
I mean, the thing about, let me go back to the tip then, 'cause you reminded, Alan, this, this, the rest that came with the tip. The tip then freezes the value of the properties for general revenue purposes, and then the increase then goes to that special fund, and so overall, then, Alligator Point would not be contributing as much to the overall cost of government, because the, the increase will be specifically targeted to re- so there's a, there's a philosophical discussion we've gotta have on that, on how that works, but, I mean, that's the concept. Yeah, yeah. Last item, uh, also Alligator Point, actually, this is a, this is ballpoint-ish type, uh, this is Gulf trail Boulevard. Board Director, County Attorney, and myself, to negotiate easement across Lot Five, Appalachia Dune subdivision of Ballpoint, provide access to the houses served by the relocated Gulf trail Boulevard. The easement is necessary, is necessary as a final step, provide access to three existing homes that are separated from the relocated road by a large wetland. I have met with, with the owner of Lot Five, Mr. Steve Brown, and discussed the situation with him, and I recommend that board take a vote, including, uh, fifty thousand dollars of what he asked for the easement, which goes across his property. Uh, I think that's a fair, considering the cost of relocating that, that road, uh, it's better for us to buy that easement, uh, from him, and I've already got the survey done, and so we're ready to move forward if the board will approve.
Plagiate the vote.
She'll move.
Got a motion on pro by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Funny we come out of, out of the Ballpoint Trust Board.
Mr. Chairman, I have something, while Alan's still here.
Yes, sir.
Just to, uh, and I might be wrong, I've been wrong before, just to clarify some of the comments we've just made about TDC, I don't think TDC, our TDC is, has enough size or tax revenue to address road infrastructure. I think we would have to be in excess of ten million dollars' worth of TDC bed tax to be able to do that. I could be wrong, but I believe that's accurate.
I mean, one of the things we talked about a long time ago was that, was, was talking about increasing the TDC revenue.
Right, right.
Even if the revenue went up, it still had to be ten million dollars?
Uh, even, well, the, uh, yes. Okay, even if you doubled it, you still would only be halfway there.
Okay. I understand that limitation. I send a microphone.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Or, Mr. Pierce?
I'll say, we did finish the public comment for the second time on, on dune restoration, St. George Island, uh, stormwater stuff, so that's been sent into Treasury for their review.
Okay. Well, we gonna work with people in Alligator Point, might as well, we can, we're, we're working with you. Next on the agenda will be, Mr. Micah Marone.
Call me what you want.
Trying to grow up.
All right, Commissioners, good morning. Still, um, item number one. At your October fifteenth meeting, I requested board action to authorize a request for funds to construct a new emergency operations center as the only item on the county's legislative twenty twenty appropriation budget request list. Since that meeting, USDA has informed staff that of the hundred and fifty million dollars that was proposed and advertised to help communities affected by natural disasters, only two million has been allocated for the entire state of Florida. Based on that information, I decided to add the Fort Coombs Armory to the legislative twenty twenty appropriation budget request list. In addition, I received three requests from the City of Appalachia Cola to rank and add to the submission list. I reached out to the City of Carabel, who informed me they were working on an application and would send me a copy once completed. As the submission deadline was Friday, November first, I submitted the applications and the ranking list to Senator Monford's, Monford and Representative Shoaf's office on Tuesday, October twenty-second, without Carabel's application. The date might be off. The list in rank order is as follows. Uh, rank was number one was the new emergency operations center, one point five million, that was a county project. Fort Coombs Armory Fire Sprinkler Installation System, two hundred and fifty thousand, that also was a county project. Third rank was the wastewater treatment plant repairs, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, City of Appalachia project. Uh, fourth was the drinking water facilities planning and design, a hundred and twelve, that was the City of Carabel project, I still haven't received that yet, but I told them they consented directly to the offices. And then there was the inflow infiltration study and repairs, three seventy, that was Appalachia's second project, and the final ranked project was list station number four, improve and repair project, four hundred and ninety-two thousand. I need board action to ratify the twenty twenty legislative appropriation budget request list as ranked and submitted.
Plagiate the vote.
Second.
Got a motion on pro by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Before I move on, to explain, Senator Shoaf had asked for a separate list of projects that wasn't appropriation. One of those, uh, items I submitted, Gary, was, uh, the state FDOT taking back Alligator Drive. I sent them, uh, some history, that's how much we spent on it, I sent them the, that white paper, that study, that, that Frank's group did, I sent it all, that's a nice package to them. So what, how, as you were asking this morning, give Senator Shoaf a call and say, hey, that item that the county sent to you, we really want you guys to pay attention to that. That would help with the meeting that Senator, Commissioner, Senator Bolt, Commissioner Bolt said that, uh, they're gonna have an FDOT, okay?
Right.
So just to let you know, I can send forward you that same email, so that you could, um, have a look. All right, we address...
We need to, we need to tell them about that. If y'all gonna meet with them, you need to tell them about their sand too.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's right.
Just let them know, it ain't gonna do no good to build a road.
That's right.
Then it, but if they go build it, take that first.
Sure, and you see, we can testify how much we're working to keep that road and, you know, what we've done for the past thirty years, and the building protections, it's a big picture, exactly right.
If they, if they saying we asking for two months at one time, take, take the money for the road, but if, you give both of them, get both of them.
I understand.
All right, Commissioners, item number three, uh, County Road Sixty-seven Project, CEI ranking. At your October fifteenth meeting, the board opened and read aloud, request for proposals for construction, engineering, and inspections services for County Road Sixty-seven, also known as Tallahassee Street Sidewalk Project. There were three firms that submitted proposals, and Dewberry Engineers Incorporated was ranked the number one firm. The rankings have been submitted to and approved by FDOT for negotiation. I need board action authorizing staff to start negotiations with Dewberry Engineers for the CEI services.
So move. Second.
Got a motion on pro by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones and Perry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
That's good for you.
Item four, Commissioners, Ms. Dottie Thurnberg, event coordinator, is requesting the board, uh, board approval to temporarily close Highway Ninety-eight for the twenty nineteen East Point Christmas Parade. Celebration event will be on Thursday, December sixth, with the parade lineup starting at four PM, the parade itself starting at four-thirty. The route will begin, uh, behind Webb Seafood on the corner of Power Drive and C.A. Gillespie Street, then a left turn eastwards onto Highway Ninety-eight, with the parade ending in front of Fisherman's Choice. Once approved, Ms. Thurnberg will be required to contact FDOT for a permit and the Sheriff's Office to assist with traffic control. Board action to authorize the closing.
So move. Second.
Got a motion on pro by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Item five, it's been over two months since County Commission sent a letter to the governor and his cabinet, and, and Representative Shoaf and Senator Monford requesting they convert the old FSU Marine Lab on Alligator Point to a public boat ramp. And we have not heard anything from any state office or agency about this matter. Does the board want to continue to pursue a boat ramp at this location or try and find another available site? I will say, Commissioners, this was based on the complaints you got, that the state issued all these leases for aquaculture out there, and there was no access to, for the people to get to their leases. So we've tried, and no response. And I've sent that in that same list, I was just, uh, explaining to Gary about, I sent that as one of the items too, I mean, which, the county doesn't issue those, those leases, you know, the state does. We were trying to help the residents get access to those leases, nobody wants to help.
We pick up the phone, call Mr. Monford or somebody, instead of writing a letter, and just tell them you'd like to know something.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe...
They gotta have some way to get the oyster leases, they sold every one of them leases down there, as far as the people don't want to put nothing for them to use, and a lot of them's making a living on that.
Someone call Shoaf and Monford.
Yeah.
And here's something else, uh, I can bundle that in our meeting with Shoaf relative to the road, we can also ask Shoaf if we could consider an alternative boat ramp off of Route Ninety-eight.
Well, the state over them leases, right?
They need to get a boat ramp.
That's right.
That's right.
The ones that gave out leases, they need to take care of this issue.
They should take care of all that.
This issue should have been taken care of before they issued the leases.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because that one little boat ramp ain't gonna hold but three trucks, and they issued fifteen or twenty leases down there, where they create the problem, they need to solve the problem, use their monies, not the county's monies, to establish a boat ramp for these people to use.
That's right.
They created the problem.
Leonard's land is not gonna work, you gotta have a boat ramp.
Yeah, I've heard it's filled up.
Leonard's land is all, it's full of sand, it's, for years, I haven't been able to use it.
So what you're saying is, if we can get the, get the state to give access to Alligator Harbor off of Ninety-eight, then the oyster farmers use their money to prepare the boat ramp, is that what you're thinking?
No, 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 no.
They use their money.
No, they use their, they sold them lease for ten thousand dollars a piece, the state did, there's about a couple million dollar worth of leases down there, they take some of that load in the boat ramp.
Okay.
Yeah, CD.
No doubt, they pour oysters.
I see, okay, yeah, I see your point. So, to be able to give state right of way to access that boat ramp, and to use the state money that we already gave them to make the boat ramp, do it all together, and that's our presentation to Shoaf.
Yeah, you, you know, if they, they always passing stuff down to us.
Okay, yeah, okay, I see.
Mandatory.
Okay.
Well, it should be mandatory when they get these leases out, they know them people had to have some way to get in there.
So if we have, if we, if we know that amount of money that's sitting there, we can talk, that kind of money that we've already given to the state, it's there to do that.
Well, the people use it, but...
Get that, that data.
Okay, so I, I wanna be clear, so I think what they're saying to you, Commissioners, other Commissioners, is that basically, you have to pay a certain amount to get the lease, so they're saying, the state should take, take that pot of money...
That, that money's in state treasury already.
And create a boat ramp, so the people they sold the leases to have access to their leases.
Okay, and that's the approach we'll take then, okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's by lack of force, land and water the same thing.
Yeah.
You gotta give them access.
That's true too.
There we go.
Don't TCC have a lease down there, or one of them?
That I don't know.
Is that, Alan, is it on this side, or is it the other side, the harbor?
Well, the, uh, the Community College, uh, not TCC, uh, through, um, the Wakulla Institute, uh, they've got a bunch of stuff going on blocking the bay.
Okay.
Maybe they've got one through some other buddy's name in Alligator Harbor, but I don't know they've got one in Alligator Harbor, they've got a bunch of them on blocking the bay.
Is that where it's at, on that side?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that should have been first, now you need to...
Agreed. All right, if I may, I'll move on to item six. In August, the board authorized a creation advertisement for a grant special project coordinator position with a thirty-five thousand dollar salary. The board requested I include a four-year degree and some grant management experience as part of the job requirements. The county received four applications, and of the four, two didn't have the required degree, one applicant asked to be removed from consideration, and the other decided not to accept the position. So after some discussion with Mr. Kurington and Mr. Pierce, I recommend the following: promote Ms. Courtney Banks, who's currently a permitting clerk, to administrative assistant, Ms. Courtney Bankston, I apologize. Uh, Ms. Banks's primary role would be to assist Mr. Kurington with FDOT and other grants. Her secondary role would be to assist me with some of the board's administrative duties, similar to what Ms. Whitney Coles was doing here before, Ms. Whitney Coles Barfield. The salary for this position will be twenty-seven five. I will then advertise for a new permitting clerk at the starting, the county's starting salary of twenty-five thousand. At some point in the near future, Mr. Pierce will discuss his recommendation for restored coordinator replacement. So I'm asking board action to authorize a change for Ms. Banks's job description and salary as stated, and advertise for permitting clerk at twenty-five thousand.
Plagiate the vote.
So move.
Got a motion on pro by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimously.
Item seven, Commissioners, I'm sorry, can I, can I jump in for a second?
If I say no, you won't stop anyway. Look, I appreciate all the support y'all giving me, and, and we've worked together for a long time now. Uh, the restore coordinator thing is a function that I do, and we now have a restore consulting firm, Langton Consulting, there still has to be a point person with the county, uh, that's where the restore coordinator can do, that person, if they so wanted to, and you all agreed, there's, there's money in the restore fund to pay that thing. The, so the problem is, and I, and I just say this now, is that I have done a lot more for you all than just restore coordinator, and some of the stuff I do is because I'm knowledgeable in the county, uh, and get paid from professional services for that. A new person may not be knowledgeable, and I use the airport as an example. Mike, so I, I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, we can call her a restore coordinator, but that person may not be able to do everything I'm doing and therefore it's gonna fall somewhere else, you know, I just.
Why are you pointing at me when you say somewhere there?
You're the fall guy.
Well, I'm pointing at Tony Shuler.
Between me and you, it's not gonna be me.
God, you the man who stepped in his britches.
Yeah, buddy, tell me about it. Shoes, britches, and shirt, yes, sir. But we'll deal with that as, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, the restore coordinator stuff, we can resolve because there's money to pay for that. All this other stuff though, unless you knew you know how to do it, you can't do it. And so, you're gonna be the next likely person to know how to do it.
One question.
Just told you.
Question is right. How much time we got?
Well, as long as I keep getting rid of things, then we're happy. But if we add things, then I'm not happy.
I'm trying to figure out, what's in North Carolina that's better than Appalachia? Can y'all tell me?
No comment.
And his health.
Insanity. Alright, so, okay, we can browse that bridge here. Speaking of bridges later on. Item seven, Mr. Joe Hamrose has informed Ms. Kelly, Ms. Amyham Kelly, that he is resigning from the county's advisory board of adjustment as District Two's representative. Ms. Kelly contacted Commissioner Bolt about a replacement and the Commissioner has recommended Mr. Benjamin Houston. Ms. Kelly and Mr. Houston have talked about the role of the advisory board of adjustment and she finds that he's very interested and seems knowledgeable of the board of adjustments process. Both Commissioner Bolt and Mr. Kelly recommend appointing Mr. Benjamin Houston to the advisory board of adjustment. And Mr. Houston is here and just wait for everyone. See? Y'all know Mr. Ben?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Mast.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, this is a really good example of how we see folks volunteering to step up for public service. And Mr. Houston has been to many of these meetings electively, on his own, and has begun to absorb the knowledge of the county. This is such a nice transition to be able to have one of these individuals now be on our board and I just wanted to compliment you. Thank you.
You Bill Gilbert.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
You got plenty of dollars out of that.
Bill Gilbert, cause one I put on got fired.
He gonna be, oh, Lord. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Didn't fire, just had it.
Pass unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you.
Item eight, Mr. Kurington has informed me that it's time for the county commission to do its annual update of the capital improvement schedule. The county is required to update the capital improvement schedule in its comprehensive plan annually. If there's a potential capital improvement project you would like to pursue within the next five years, contact Mr. Kurington so he can include it in the proposed schedule. A public hearing is required to amend the capital improvement schedule in the comp plan. The current list is attached to my report. Board action to authorize a public hearing to amend the capital improvement schedule in the comp plan.
So moved. I meant, I'm. Pledge of the vote. I'm getting, I'm trying to pass it. Pledge of the vote.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. Second by Commissioner Mast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
At your last meeting, I informed the board of the need to create a Franklin County Complete Count Committee, say that too many times, for the 2020 U.S. Census. I have, and I use the air quote, recruited Ms. Patty Connell and Ms. Buena Brown to serve as the chair and vice chair, organize the committee, and again, recruit other members. I met with Pat Buena and Evelyn from, Evelyn is, of course, of the Census Bureau. She's been here before, on Thursday to discuss the creation and the role of the CCC. Patty and Buena will be on future agendas to discuss the importance of the census as it relates to promotions and getting as many people as possible in the county to participate in the census. As we all are aware, census participation equals money.
Yes.
For the county. I could tell you over the last two censuses, about twenty years, ten, every ten years, we had sixty percent one year and seventy percent, forty? It was forty and sixty? Oh, my goodness, yeah. I thought it was sixty and seventy. So, Commissioner, we gotta do a better job of getting more people in the county. Good. The positive thing is it's online now. So, you can do it from your, once you get, you're gonna get a card. I don't want to speak too much, but it's a card. You got a special code to say it's you, your household. You can do it on your phone. So, that saves you having to worry about the knock on your door, you know. It's very private, very secure. The ones that don't, you know, and again, I'm taking away from their thunder. At some point, they're gonna come in front of the board and have a nice full report and explain what's going on. But for today, I need board action to approve the creation of the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee and appoint my new recruiter.
Pledge of the vote.
Ms. Pat and Ms. Buena as the chair and vice chair.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, again, this is another compliment of how somebody is so tenacious to be here and see you.
And I apologize, sir.
You know so much about us and that's good.
They two are here and.
And is that Ms. Brown over?
Buena, wave. Okay, so there's your chair and vice chair.
One's here about every meeting.
Yep. Yep, Pat is and Mike supports.
She supports us every meeting.
Yep, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Commissioner Bolt informed me that he was planning to attend a Florida Department of Education public hearing entitled the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act. Fortunately, the one-day public hearing was scheduled for yesterday, November fourth, in Leon County, prior to today's meeting. So, there was not an opportunity to bring this to the board approval before today. So, action to authorize traveling expenses for Commissioner Bolt's attendance at the DOE public hearing.
Pledge of the vote.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Mast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Yes, sir.
Just so you know, it's, it's looking for funding future for Franklin County schools. I presented on behalf of the Franklin County Commission just an idea to help reinforce the career and technical education that they're planning to do in the future relative to a course that I called How to Study. And talked a little bit about that and what that might do to complement the entire effort. And I feel like in the future, this may be good sources of funding for Franklin County and that's why I went. Thank you.
That's, that's a good thing. I mean, we both help out each other. We both help the schools and the cities, so that's good.
Okay. The rest of my items are information, information items, so, you know, there won't be any action needed. Go right through it. During the month of November, the county commission, along with the Weems Board of Directors, heard proposals from Alliant, TMH, and Ascension Sacred Heart regarding the future of healthcare in Franklin County at two separate workshops. The Weems Board of Directors is now tasked with discussing those proposals and forwarding a recommendation to you at a future meeting. To assist with their decision-making, the Weems Board of Directors has scheduled a public hearing to allow the general public to voice their preferences and concerns on Thursday, November fourteenth, at five-thirty PM, right here in your meeting room. This meeting will be properly noticed. By that, I mean, we will, it should be noticed already that one or more Commissioners may be in the audience. So, we'll make sure that's, verify that that's done. I will encourage Representatives from both cities to continue to attend all meetings and public hearings relating to healthcare services in the county so that they remain as informed as possible. That information will be essential to both cities when the county receives a recommendation from the Weems Board of Directors. Item twelve, Commissioner Jones has been working with the finance office and using TDC funds for new bathrooms on St. George Island Beach for the last few months. They found a possible option that includes a loan repayment plan that Commissioner Jones will bring to TDC, perhaps at their next regular meeting for discussion. After TDC has discussed this matter, a recommendation will be sent to this board. If, let Commissioner Jones know if you have any concerns that you would like discussed at the TDC meeting regarding this project. Item thirteen, at your last meeting, I provided a link to a new aquaculture dock lease that the county received from the Division of Aquaculture. As this week is a deadline, send your comments or objections to me directly or to the department. Below is a link providing, I provided the last meeting. That's that dock lease that I talked about at the last meeting. They, Portia, I'm sorry, Miss Portia Saft, just sent me an email saying, if you have any comments, this is the week. I need them. Item fourteen, I, along with Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Bolt, attended the first Living Shoreline Interagency Meeting on Thursday, October twenty-fourth. There are quite a few state agencies in attendance via phone, and Mr. Rick Harder of Ecology and Environment Incorporated led the meeting. Mr. Harder provided a background of the project, but asked the attendees to share historical knowledge of the site, assist with development of the project goals and vision, and assist with identifying any project constraints. The next step and action items were discussed as preparation for the next meeting. I'll inform the board of the next meeting date, time, and location as soon as it's confirmed. Below is a link to the meeting documents and Commissioner Jones also handed out earlier some notes from the meeting. So, you can review that and let me know if there's anything you want me to forward to Mr. Harder before the next meeting. Commissioner Jones said it might actually have, the next meeting might be confirmed already. They just didn't inform me, so I'll go out and look forward to make sure.
I thought it was the twelfth, but anyway.
Yeah, at eight, so I'll go pull it and forward you guys the confirmation. Cause I think it's in the evening, so most everybody, all the Commissioners. And I also have to make sure he also says the same thing, one or more Commissioners being, be in the audience or in attendance in this meeting. I gotta double check with him and Josh. There's nothing else. Item fifteen, as part of Chris Doolin's November first, twenty nineteen daily briefings, there was an article that stated DEP has given thumbs up to issuing permits for oil and gas drilling in Calhoun County. These permits for six oil wells, which would be located between the Appalachia River, Dead Lakes, and Chipola River in Calhoun County, was submitted in the fall of twenty eighteen prior to Hurricane Michael. On October twenty-second, Ms. Georgia Ackerman, Riverkeeper's Executive Director, sent you an email stating the Riverkeeper's position regarding these six exploratory oil permits. I've included Ms. Ackerman's email and Ms. Doolin's daily briefing as they both contain links with additional information on these exploratory oil permits. The, the Riverkeeper did a very good job of explaining why they were against it and it's in the, it's one of the links that you'll have as part of my packet that I sent to you guys.
But this is done deal now, right?
Yes, sir. But these exploratory permits are, I think, depending on what the results of that are, they can, they have to go back to DEP for additional permits if I'm not mistaken. So, hopefully, the results of this will be posted. We'll be informed. And if we want to object at that point, we'll have a chance to. Item sixteen, Mr. Corey Bard, your new library director, he started yesterday. He'll be at a future meeting agenda to introduce himself to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I got something on the side. On this library director board, we hadn't been told the truth from day one from the library board. We didn't have to have no master's degree to get our grants written. We hired somebody from New Mexico. We had a girl sitting over in the office. It could have took the job from Franklin County. They did not come for us and tell us, nothing about the background check or they was gonna hire this man. They just went ahead and hired him. They should have come before us and told us, cause the kid in Eastport could have run the job. And then the other lady they hired sat here for three years, took our money, got her master's degree, and pulled out. The same day she got her master's degree, had all of our eighty, a hundred thousand dollars and left us. I think the board should come before us and before they start just hiring somebody.
So, you wanna, wanna make that a rule?
Yeah, I need to, cause I mean, we had a kid over there that could have took the job, didn't have half a master's degree. We hired somebody from New Mexico.
Yeah, I'm with you. I believe in local.
I mean, local, our people from Franklin County, the kid been running it ever since the other director left.
I'm with you, William, I'm a Commissioner.
I just want Franklin County to know that, I mean, we wasn't told the truth about the library. Michael knows I've been telling him. We did not have to have a master's degree. We worked out of Wild Color County under them.
Yeah, Commissioner Mast had asked me to do some checking on that and what I found out is that once we are part of the Wilderness Coast Consortium.
Right.
They, they have the master's degree. So, we can hire, as long as our director is a county employee, works full-time for the county, and our libraries are open a certain amount of hours, that alone qualifies us to get the state grant that we get, which is seventy, eighty this year. About seventy-five thousand this year. It changes from year to year. So, the requirement that our director has to have an MLS is that, that, that is not required for the state grants. That's more of a preference on the county side.
Well, we, if, I'm, I'm, I'm about like Commissioner Mast, if we got somebody local can do the job and they qualify, I think we, they the one who paying tax. Ain't nobody from New Mexico paying no tax.
But normally, don't they come for, the other directors, when they hired them, they come to us and said, the background is passed and we recommend hiring them. This wasn't even brought for us. The minute they realized that they got him on here.
Yeah, once the board made the offer, what, what they did, you know, once the board made the offer to them, that, that gives them the green light to go ahead and do the background check. Commissioner Mast is right. Usually, as a courtesy, they come and say, okay, we did the background check. Everything is good. Here's our starting date. Whatever, any more questions or concerns? It was, well, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see a motion made where they can't do that no more. I mean, they.
I'm gonna make a motion for the library.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yeah.
Wait, I want to wait for the board to finish their, their comments so I'll have as much information from you and your directions as possible. But my recommendation is if we're going to adopt a new rule for, for hiring a library director, whether this applies across all the departments, let me draft a rule, bring it back to you at the next meeting so you'll have it in writing. You can look at it and then you can adopt it and, or modify it or however you want to proceed. I think you do need, if we're gonna have a rule, we probably should write it down and have a chance to think about it and then make a decision at the next meeting. So, it sounds like we're, you know, the horse is already out of the barn at this point, so.
Yeah, I'm upset about it, cause the kid could have run the job. I mean, it's no sense in hiring somebody from New Mexico coming, you had somebody on the job.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we direct Mr. Michael Marone to get in touch with Ms. Kate Aguilar and the friends in the library so they can address some of these concerns that have been expressed here today by the commission.
Are you gonna add that, what?
Yeah, yes, sir. And, and what the, and I'll add to my motion. What the attorney stated he wants to do and, and that's come up with a, a rule for our review and possible adoption.
Thank you, Ricky, cause you understand where I'm coming from, Ricky, cause, I mean, from day one, she's been sitting here telling us that you had to have a master's degree, master's degree, master's. And I kept saying, no, you don't. She said, yeah, you do.
Look, it's addressed.
I know it, cause the kid could have had the job.
And I'll second that with a comment.
If she didn't get it, somebody in Franklin County could have got it. Oh, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
And I'll second that with a comment, please.
Second by Commissioner Burke. Look here, in New Mexico, don't vote for me. The people in Franklin County vote for me.
And, and local respect for folks who have had a lot of longevity in our county is very appropriate. There's also just another thought, and this isn't necessarily relative to the library, but just an overall thinking of credentialing in our county. Many times, people come with high-level credentials that can move the county forward. Just think of physicians and nurses and other types of people that are specially trained, well-vetted, and highly credentialed. And I just want to remember the spirit of all of that. As we think locally right now in this particular character issue, characteristics of issues, let's think also to remember that we recognize in this proposal that there are others with high-level credentials that come in that can move the county forward in other different disciplines.
Yeah, I understand that.
I understand that very well. But when you got someone that can do the job.
Yep.
That's done then there, working there, and give her the job. That's what she's there for, to put herself in there, to climb up the ladder. And everybody else we've ever hired, she took their master's degree right there and got it on the job, and she takes off and uses all two years of our money, then leaves the day she gets it.
Yeah, and so this is a very special characteristic here, yeah. And we may want to think of, you know, other qualified people that are owned in our, in our different departments, but they need to be properly vetted and credentialed.
Yeah, you right about that. I, I, I see where you come from, Commissioner Burke, and I understand, but we, that, we talking about two different things.
We are. That's right.
We talking about two different categories here now.
That's right.
You're, this is library director, but if we had to adopt him, yeah. I think he should get a preference too. But that, it'll be a different thing then. We ain't trying, you know you're gonna have to bring in some, some kind of professional people, like doctors and nurses.
Yes, sir. Yeah, okay.
We got some nurses, yeah. Ain't got no doctors, I don't think. Alright, we done voted.
No, we waiting.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
The final, final item, Commissioners, is the county has been informed by the local FDOT contractor for Orville that there is an upcoming fender system and lighting repair project for Franklin and Gold County. This work should include, mostly, it's bridge repair. This work should include repairs to the navigation light, lighting systems, repairs and replacement to the bridge lighting systems, and the fender system repairs. And yes, I did have to look up exactly where the fender system and the bridge is, but I got it. In addition, FDOT is also evaluating the pavement on US ninety-eight in Franklin that was damaged by Hurricane Michael and hopefully will add funding for design next fiscal year and funding for construction around 2023.
At them lights.
Yeah, so that's basically the lights, the navigation lights, the lights up on top of the bridge. Yes, the fender system and underneath, and then hopefully, we could see some paving for Highway ninety-eight. You know, somewhere between Carrabelle and Appalachia, hopefully, in 2023, hopefully.
I know we, for them lights, I heard on TV where they were getting on them in Panama too, on they Hathaway Bridge. They lights out, but we, we sent over there and told them two months ago, Iowa was out. But that, it's a, it's a hazard on them boats, on running them bridges.
Commissioner, that's my.
People get hurt on somebody walking, cross the top of it and then it not lit up properly. That's dangerous too. Cross, especially when people coming up on the approaches. They need to be fixed.
I got one question from Mr. Marone.
Good.
On item number twelve, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Looking at all the revenue coming in, additional revenue that was not budgeted for the TDC. And I ain't stealing nobody's thunder, but anyways, I'm saying they should have more revenue than they got budgeted with this bathroom project. Why can't they take some of those access, excess revenues and just go ahead and fund this bathroom project rather than going through this loan program they're talking about?
Commissioner, you want to expand the ten percent?
It is considered a beach park facility and you can only use ten percent annually on it.
So, you're gonna break it down and pay so it's on ten percent?
That's, that's right, yes, sir. Trying to work within the restrictions and still hit that one.
But y'all have enough money to pay the payment.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, through the ten percent.
Shouldn't be a problem.
I thought you were volunteering for restore. You know, you talk about that move in the eighties called the fall guy. Yeah, I saw it. Make his name with Mike too.
Is any more, that's you?
That's it from my report, Commissioner.
Anybody got anything else from Mr. Marone?
Well, I do have something, Mr. Chairman. Michael, I forgot when Bonda was here, but could you please get in touch with him and I know we had a lot going on, especially from Hurricane Michael. I would really like an ETA where we have all of these old. I would really like an ETA where we can have all these old collection containers in place. We've talked about it several times, but he's never said this is the date they're gonna be in the ready to go, so. We really need to get that done.
I will.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
One more thing from Mr. Marone. I want to know about this access road at the airport. What you get with, with the airport engineers and see where we at on that. We've already awarded a bid and all this, but they were supposed to scale it down to bring the project into the budgeted amount of money we had.
Okay.
And it's been three months, now it ain't nothing happening.
Is that the AFCON?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I want to know what's going on. I'm re, I'm ready to move on this project, but the bid was awarded three months ago. All they had to do is scale it down some and make it come within budget and move on.
And I got one thing I want you, like a, that young man coming earlier, them five victims. What's going on with this, and find out what's going on with that road.
I will.
They are on, you know, the people, the people, some of them getting new trailers and that. They lost their house, and now it's all messed up. Some of them gonna get new trailers, some of them gonna get old trailers. Well, what, what is, what the, what do, what is what? What do they supposed to do?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I had, like, I got the list from Deborah, and I failed to put it yesterday, and I failed to put it in my report, but I'll, I'll send it to you guys anyway, and then I think she might be here at the next meeting, because a couple of action items she needs you guys to approve, but I, I'll find out, sir.
We need to know who's supposed to get it, or why the rest of them ain't getting it.
Okay.
Somebody got to tell them people, sir. Okay.
I will.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got anything else from Mr. Marone? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Shuler, County Attorney Report.
Brief report, there is not a report. I was busy volunteering at the, the festival last week and did not prepare a report, but there's nothing that, that needed to be done that hasn't yet been taken care of, so I, I think we're moving along nicely.
All right. You recruit from it yet?
Yes, sir.
That's a lot of work. Okay, Commissioner comment? There's no Commissioner comment?
I, I need to ask a question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Michael?
Sir.
I, I, let this slip my mind, I know we're in Commissioner comments, and we're not supposed to technically do motions and that. I cannot go to the FAC conference down in Broward County.
Okay.
But I think Commissioner Parrish wanted to go, cause he's actually on the consortium board, and they're having a meeting. So is that already been approved, travel and everything for that, or is that?
I think early in the year, you guys approve, like, all your, your, your regular conferences.
Well, it's taken care of.
I think, yeah, I think things that are out, you know, Commissioner Bolt, and I think that's the only thing we have to bring up henceforth. I think every year.
That trip was all voted on, Mr. Ricky.
I just want to make sure.